Approval of the agenda was presented, are there any corrections or additions? There are none, I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Make a motion.
Second, laws in favor, opposed? Counsel will recess into a brief executive session to discuss personal related matters.
We'll be back.
Now, the approval of the agenda is presented, they don't do that, they do that to make hurry a stand.
Chris.
I'm just reading your text now. Is that what you're here for?
Kinda sorta.
Good luck.
I can hear. You go to there.
I talked to him this guy.
Yeah, I've seen her, she runs the, run half, he runs the, run half.
And him too.
Well, I know that's what he is.
Of course, it had to be you, because I wasn't that way.
Oh yeah, you wouldn't have seen it, I heard, my peoples are like, we're gonna, I go see. I don't know the people there. Because I know there's something you can buy.
You don't get them on the ads.
It's quite dirty brass.
You don't get them on the ad, you are.
It's so low, I probably get hundred. He's not got shoulders though.
Useful.
He's a, yeah.
Well. Well, what you do is if you saw brass being nothing on, then you know about it. If you did some of the solo ones, could be, could be brass, could be, could be gold. Yeah, I would probably call them dirty, so I would just do all the gold, all the coins with nothing on it, really.
I'd go out very quickly, and it jerked right into those walls. That's a good sense, yeah. That can't be children, I think the children are enjoying the motorcycle, all free.
Yeah, um, I was there, my boy, the other guy was there, but they say two broken ankles, two broken legs, and a broken arm. He had a bike, it actually snapped, the handlebars off, and it folds the front end, clear front radiator. Now Chase said he probably would be alright if he wouldn't have went up over that curb. Of course, others hasn't did all that, we here, so. Friends there came and picked up all his personal effects. It was all, I guess the EM must cut them off from the scene, checking them out, so they can even gather all that stuff up. His wife still wasn't allowed to see him, so. I imagine since he got all the damage, so, he didn't want stopping, bleeding, and swelling again, so. He had top back park in the fence, so he'd see what happens. Harley Davidson was a, um, like a cross bike, like one you go off everywhere to work. Yeah, and they're, I didn't know that. Twenty twenty-one, Chase looked at the VIN number up, put on the computer.
That's like enough for a bike.
Um. Not be tired and stuff.
But they put the bike on fire, and you don't want it to be.
Yeah, it definitely looks like Yamaha or Durobike or something like that, yeah, you know, real high center, having those things. Yeah. I didn't realize until we got off the rollback, I helped him stand it up, and I said Harley Davidson right down the tanks. Yep.
My friend of mine did that, was he, maybe the one who killed that arm.
Yeah, hopefully it doesn't turn out like the other one, Rick, about myself. That was a shame, like, she's still good at it too. They had to put her pelvis back together and her wrist back together. They, actually that guy there, a friend of mine, was her uncle, and they fixed his wrists and his legs, and their brain was in there, to be honest. People just don't, they don't pay attention. I wrote a repo on the other day from CH on the Ganksburg, down to Desa. That was a Harley too, I was like, I'm not. Boy didn't wanna haul it, so I was putting ride at home, and I'm probably playing my kids.
What's death rickers?
Yeah. And the damn thing, how do you hang it on, I'm like, really? No, they're not legal, they're potentially not legal, because it can't be above rider's shoulders. So me as the motorcycle inspector, I can't even expect anything above my shoulders. This thing, I mean, they were. They're not coming. And then when, it was one of those days, I guess two weeks ago, it was cold, so I had my jacket on. So when you got your arms up like this, and all your jacket trying to blow you back off the bike, I'm like, it's just kind of uncomfortable riding like that. Maybe a t-shirt with it or something, I don't know.
I thought I wanted to, back in, instead of, I wanted to fill the head off with copper, and then I really wanted to, uh, look. What was nothing about Harley came also began with the feature body of.
I had a customer brought his in, it was one of Bad Dogs, and stretched front end and stuff around it, and inspected it, and he goes, ride this thing, I wanna sell. I rode up to school, they're not coming back with an hour, no thanks, can't turn it down, you'd be lucky to turn it around here. For four. I don't know what you do if you're on the road, how to.
Oh, you hit a ditch like this, you hit the front four.
That was, that was a hard tail, it was, you know, big wide tires.
That's a show, that's all.
One of the Bad Dogs? Yeah.
Has a big, does it have this big brake on it?
Yeah, it was pretty big, it was, it wasn't, it wasn't huge, but it was, it was bad enough, you just couldn't turn the part along.
There's no front brake?
I don't remember if that one did it.
They don't put a front brake on, and that loses like seventy percent of your stopping power.
Well, this one, I wrote back to them, CH up there, front brake didn't work.
Well, they unhooked them because of.
But that was all spongy, it was all hooked up, and it was spongy, and I'm like, I use my front brake all the time.
Oh yeah, if you're used to riding, you do it, but if you do something like that, and it's too far out, and you hit it, and then it'll take the bikes.
Oh, that makes sense, this, this one the other day was great, I was just standing. I'm used to pulling up the stop signs, like that, gotta front brakes up there, and that was a wide guy too, so you figure out here, so you can either pull the brake and. I like to ride, I don't need that, all the people on the road don't pay attention.
No, I did it up years ago too.
My kid wants to get a bike, every time he sees an axe like that, he'll just stay away, longer over, he's had dirt bikes, but.
Well, that's totally different, theirs your fault when you crash. I love them, I got rid of my dirt bike too, because I didn't recover from the damage I did to my body as quickly.
Yeah, I know that feeling.
Yeah.
Oh wow, that's a big one.
Okay, it'd be like a hundred.
They make one bigger than that?
They made a four ninety. Cause I used to ride with the Miko Williams, because I learned. We were up at Tower City, and I had my four fifty, and I was flying through there, and he had one of the new four nineties, he would buy me like a stock, just like, get off the check, and see if it's still learning.
You know Tom, always saying he's on a stick, he always come? He always had Miko's, and he always went to Tower City, right, he had four ninety.
I really, well, I was riding, I was riding with Jerry Hardy. Mike Markham, Jared Lemon, this is fantastic, he said.
Tom's ex-wife married by Washington State.
Oh yeah, uh, it's been, that's.
Two years ago, that was back on ladies.
I haven't seen them since probably late seventies. Well, mid eighties.
But Tom had that four ninety, he broke his ankle working back.
Oh yeah, I had a sore leg for a long time, but, but, my knee, your pressure, compression broke, and so I was just kicking it over, and it kicked back sometimes, I lived to that long.
Imagine you were last, or I'd be hard.
Oh my god, the only thing we do, the only thing was bad about, is I went from a, I had a Brickman frame with a Moncas engine on it. It was, I got embarrassed, which was in New York, up there where, on North Broad Street, right by where the prison used to be, at the end of Deals Hill there. Great Brickman built frames, the cafe racers and stuff like that, everyone was just probably floating, um, frames, and they were the first ones to have. Need front tire and everything on it, they were lightweight, and.
I know that.
I had redone it, it was a guy that lived on George Street, right off Route Thirty, Drew, that's his name, and he redid mine, and they put a rebound, sent it out of a, you ever seen those Suzuki five fifties? They have that little flutter rebound, he put that on it, it was fast, I can, I can blow off three sixty Yamaha, and I went from that to the Mako, and it was like, one from nineteen eighty. Because all of a sudden, I had me five and a half inches of traps on the, my, because the Brickman, the Mako had all the foot, and when I crashed, the Moncas, you know, crashed, your bike would be up here. When you crashed the Mako, you, and the bike would be going, and you'd still be following it for like thirty feet, you know, because you just realized, didn't realize.
What year did Miko's make those?
Mine was seventy-eight. And I think the four ninety would have came out probably eighty, eighty-one, something like that. Cause I was still riding at eighty, because when I cut my leg, I was still riding, I was breaking out.
This was around like eighty, I was probably eighty-seven, eighty, somewhere near that, Tom, those guys riding, they're like, now, I'm fairly light.
Well, they did probably, I don't know, I got, I got out of it, I did, my body couldn't handle it anymore, I already breathed, like, like, five hundred.
All them litter cross racers, they're twenty-seven, that was on there, hot running.
Well, we used, I was part of a team that made the rail riders, and we used to, and they had the motocrosses up in South America, Argentines, Lumberjack, whatever that was, we named one after. I've seen a guy come off that downhill jump up there, going a four ninety, I mean, it was too loud, it was cable, and it taped him down, and it, and he had sprained out of there, and the whole, the wheels just exploded. I mean, you just see, like, I never seen anything like that, it was, the guy was pissed, he got all these kicking up right.
And what you do is that in recent years, South America?
That was in the seventies.
I remember when we were down the trail, we had, yeah, well, started to feel them now back.
And they had, yeah, and then they had, uh, Happy Lambors too. Right up, right up the street from Trailers. Hm, we're the second one, Club Ball Happy Lambors, fifteen years, that was there.
Sleeping Hollow, sleeping hollow.
Yeah, I don't know where that, we just went up there to South Mountain, and that was, and they would go across the drag strip. Yeah, it was like, it was places where they closed, they would be back through the woods there, like, when they were shut down, they didn't really struggle, it was, that was that pony thing, it was like an eighth of a mile.
So it's more like a burrow style, uh, track there, through the woods.
Well, no, that was motocross, they were. They ran everything from fifty, to open, and they scored points.
Sleepy Hollow, that was still the boys too, I mean, it was.
Right, their motocross track. We even had trails in the back there, in, uh, the ball hill back there by, what's the song now?
Eight.
Eight, yeah. He went just, uh, back through the woods there, and we had trails, things back, trials, I'm sorry. And we had an indoor, and that's just how many laps can you complete, and so many, what's the, yeah, every time a lot is. Yeah, I still have my brother's BSA, sitting in my living room. He died willed to me, so I just worry about Carl.
When I worked at Harley, I worked there seventeen years. Oh yeah?
I did work over there in the kitchen, I was still the old kitchenette, in the building.
Oh, down there, the actual, little building that was in there, yeah. They call that sprint series.
A lot of it was.
Kitchen on the other side.
And when they opened the new plane, I did some work up there, because they gave me hell for walking across something, I don't know what it was, I didn't even know where I was going, I just went in and walked in the building, carrying the tools, and then they're pitching it out, that's all, yeah.
You're throwing that idea, this place on full top.
Yeah. Trials bike.
Is that what they were?
Oh yeah, it's amazing, you ever watch, it's like.
They don't want to the farm show every year, I got my mom up there, the way they jump on these rocks, and now the other side. I'd have thirty stitches till I tried something like that.
I don't know how they get it. And they, they make it work, it's like, let's do it.
Just like, punch straight up a wall.
Something where you show the sky, you go up the hill, and you couldn't even walk it over the top, once you got it to the top, you had to back down, back up.
So you come down backwards?
Yeah. It was in a moon, on any Sunday. Probably in early seventies, because I was in the sky, when I was on the shit, we went to watch it. It was back from, even green. Yeah, I think he was riding with it, you know, guy that was, had the number one thing from Harley, who was riding, and showed him just riding in dirt, and all kinds of stuff, and it was showing everything from kids, and bicycle, and moon, sauces, stuff. Long to flat track, and the hardest you remember, the guy, the flat track, and says, he was talking, and he says, what's it like? He says, because they had a big steel shoe name there, he said, it's nothing like going down the street at like a hundred miles an hour, that just thrown sideways.
One of my best friends at school did that, he raced, well, he raced on trailways, it was a flat track down there, and then in winter time, we would have, we'd run it down, or race indoor, or anything, the port runner model. And sometimes on your steel shoes, you race around, it's like, it'd be noisy.
When you show the ice racing too, they have like spikes coming out there, noddies.
I think you're on about one of them there.
He said it's like getting run over by a chainsaw.
These druggery still built now, five miles.
Only thing I ever did was motorcycles, I had a Norton seventy-two.
There's a thing we haven't heard a while, Norton.
That's seven fifty Commando, another thing to fly, and corner, oh, they did handle it, like, I had one, my foot lanes came, like, down and out, I had that wore off from grinding, going into corners and stuff. I did not care what I was doing.
And follow up question. Okay, I agree.
That was the reasons I gave it up there.
What else would you be doing, like, making cheeseburgers? Same saving for longer. I can't think of a race car that's two or eight. That's very good, snack.
It's a long.
We used to have, I think that was a church over there. The donation office, but that one, it's so close, we just come down, a bit, and then go to work.
There were so many of them back there in the late sixties, mid seventies, some of them had the manufacturers making stuff. Those Honda Trail seventies, one twenties, they made, those things are big money now.
Really?
Oh yeah.
And they run away, they run away.
Yeah, of course not.
I just, I grew up in Seven Valleys, in, way outside Seven Valley, and we grew up there and find all kinds of stuff, like signs, and bicycles, or stuff like that, all the stutter, that is up there, you see them in pictures now, it's worthless, unfortunately. I just think of all the stupid signs I see, thrown away, people just may on the side of a building to cover up all the, set them up to make a piece of a car, covers a rust. They're upstairs. They're upstairs.
So is that you?
Why are you going up there? Did you like the pledge of allegiance?
Twenty-three years ago.
Are you ever waiting on?
No, not when I see one of them.
You guys saw me in the shop. You did come and take part in the shop. Were you really?
We went together.
I could not be.
Where were you seeing them?
A long time ago.
Yeah. I got Jenny's Uber. I'm trying to think of who.
I like it Facebook, but I don't get it. I'm very curious, like, saying anything on Facebook.
What, where does that come from?
That's not the. We're not that close.
They're cheaper.
He retired after the help he got there. Because.
They should have.
So you left.
Yeah, no, I do. I used to. Yeah, it's a coffee shop, right? Come on, the way to rich field. Right in the corner, right across, in a line, to work in, yeah. It's water. I think it's special. Very, very. They've got the door out here. First place you live, like, wrong, so it's not really a bar, so I was about to step up and go. Hey, this is a good place, hang out, move, tune these down there, please, help them out. Cut the wood. There was, I think, a lot of candy and paper. And you rush out there, it's digging wood, digging bad.
But it's not the point.
It's just something like that. We should take a little place of honor for whoever comes into the council. Say, there's a game.
We're waiting for James, he's in the red. Professor just watched him.
Can their pens go back? What job are they gonna do on my lawn? Yes, they won't because they can't find it. They've got to look up their hand and find her. There's nothing to hold on.
Alright, council meeting shall come back in order. Reading of the minutes, councilor got a copy. Are there any corrections or additions?
I think we have a second.
Alright, is there a second?
No.
All's in favor?
Unhinged.
Close. Alright, citizens remarks, I have a person in line from the local fire department to discuss possible renovations. Bingo activities.
State your name and address.
Name and address.
Name and address. My bedroom, six sixteen, over the drive, entered.
Harold, two fifty York Road, David. And he is the president of the fire company and the vice president. And we just have some things and we'd like to bring it up to council. Um, I would just inform that you can. So, we would like to get your approval to upgrade the bathrooms. Ron did an awesome job at painting and doing the carpet and stuff like that, but like when you're in the lady's daughter, some things that need to be done. Like I would like to put the plastic partitions that are maintenance free, new flooring down in the bathroom room. Now, tonight was the first one I was interested in that. Um, but the urinal needs to be replaced, so there's some things to do in there. I went at the fire company meeting, they voted that we'll pay, of course, to have it done if you guys are okay with letting us do it. But obviously, it would be with talking to Charlie or whoever about collars, exactly what you guys want, but we would pay to do it. It's a twofold for us, one, the county, the borough has been gracious in letting us rent this every other Friday for bingo, so that we pay. You pay our electric bill, and two, it also did allow us the people who do spend the money playing bingo, save us a period. So, we're just asking if you would allow us to do that.
And you're watching.
I'm gonna do it. I'll go to it. Yeah, I'm good. Didn't Ron volunteer to do this work?
Oh, well, yes, Ron did say he could help, right.
Yeah, yeah, Ron volunteered.
But what I'm saying is, like, collars and stuff like that, I'm not, it's not just gonna be what I want, it's, it's gonna be what you guys think. Like, we did raise with carpet up there, so maybe we'll stay with whatever. But I just would like to know if you could spruce it up a little bit.
I think it's a great idea, and I don't think the whole thing should be based on just what it brings for the fire companies bingo, being that this is a borough building. And it should be also for the community to use for events of their choice. Like, when I brought the fact of using it from a nonprofit that I'm a part of, the fire company didn't even want me in the kitchen. So, and I am an auxiliary member as well as a council member, but it wasn't granted for me even have a discount to use that kitchen. So, this building isn't just for that fire department, this is a community building.
Right, and we're doing, but we're making out.
Right, I get that, but just because you're paying out the money doesn't make it that this is the fire department's building. Because they paid the money to make it right.
Did I ever say that?
No, I'm just saying, my, my opinion as a council member.
What I said was, it's a thing.
It needs to be for the community.
For them allowing us to use it.
And the entire community.
Absolutely, we're not gonna just do it for bingo, then take the bathroom back out.
No, well, you said to make it where people are paying money for bingo, you're the one who's spending the money.
When they come in for bingo, they see, well, we're putting the money too.
Right, or when they're running for a retirement party, or for a birthday party.
I think her last excuse is that rents it and work on running it.
So, it should be for everything that everybody pays for.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I said that, like, it's for everyone, but we're just asking.
I just wanna make sure.
To pay for it.
That's all, I'm just saying, I mean.
So, what you're saying is, you don't think it should be done?
No, 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 I just think it shouldn't be specifically for bingo.
Bathroom is specifically for bingo.
Do you think that makes any sense? Do you think we're gonna work it out or we're not having to go?
I didn't say that.
Well, just think about what you said.
We're doing it because we use it, and it still screws it up for the community.
That's, that's.
That's apartment.
Oh, no, but there's more, yeah, we're that great, we stop.
The other thing we'd like to bring up is a cabinet on the wall back here that will lock up where our bingo supplies and that, but it will match with the floor down here. And then some lights outside, like on the wall out here.
Yeah, that way someone will call on Friday.
They're on the corner.
They fell from bingo, right out there.
But the light would call anybody who uses this thing.
Yeah, the lighting's still on the outside, above the lamp.
Right, because once you get to the top of ramp towards parking lot, it's black.
Is there any agreement on this, or is it something we just agree on with council? So, it sounds to me that there could be two parts here, there is a rule to coordinate improvements with your manager, if appropriate, and then also maybe coming back with a proposal if you get something together for the actual work. So that they know what is going to be done and they can approve it then. So, I think that's probably makes sense, to approve to coordinate.
Right, do you guys are okay with me getting the price?
Yeah.
So, you're sure you're gonna go in the summer, like, when there's a night?
Right, right.
Along with, along with the price, we might also, I mean, whoever wants to throw in a clarifying sentence, this does not guarantee anything further, any further right wing, it's just we weren't donating money for the improvements.
And also for the cabinet, they're, they're gonna pay for that cabinet.
That can all be worked out, yes.
Okay. There was one other thing that you didn't bring up, you didn't take it out. Uh, the key for the papers now is public paper roll. To be able to go about the key. Quarter mile shelf, while we don't have the.
Yeah, they ran out of paper.
I mean, we were.
Did you tell me or?
Paper towel, I told you. The toilet paper.
Well, the paper towels are out, I told you.
That's always a big one, remember. Did we have that open today? Nope. Well, we had a fine, we don't, we don't know whether a regular key, paper towel, we could get the toilet paper.
You're talking about the added Spencer.
Yeah. Yeah, that's that, the exact one that we.
Maybe just have a, a, maybe a stockroom.
Is that, you said?
Contact somebody to get it.
Yeah. No, it's not locked.
No.
Yeah, it's not. We, uh, yeah.
If we know where it is, you know, and then we're gonna just replace it.
Yeah, if you use the home supply, that's all, everything that's in there, it's not locked. Sometimes you take it, but it's not.
Oh, that's a really big town.
For a paper towel, you didn't just eat cheese.
Not one of the fucking keys.
Yeah.
So.
I'm good with it.
The real deal pricing?
Yep. Alright, I would suggest a motion to be, uh, to approve the coordination of bathroom improvements with your manager, uh, and the development of proposals for, uh, for those improvements.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
All's in favor?
Alright.
Close. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional, uh, comments, please come up to the podium, say your name and address, please, leave your comments for three minutes.
Counsel, I'm here to address concerns about the proposed amendment to the domestic exotic animal ordinance, which looks like it would serve to legalize the toothed curse commercial apiary, which is currently in violation of existing ordinance. This process raises legal and ethical issues that demand a postponement of the vote until resolved. First, council meeting sunshine act requires transparency in government actions. This amendment, developed seemingly by the council president, maybe Mr. Toothaker's request, and possibly the advice of the solicitor, appears to have bypassed public deliberation. Most council members were not aware of it until it was published in the paper, suggesting a private discussion violating the act's requirement for open meetings across notice of place. Second, the borough code mandates that legislative acts, like the advertisement of an amendment, require a majority council vote, which was not done. Lack of transparency, of transparent deliberation denies residents their right to participate in this process and is restricted powers of council. Further, there's a clear conflict of interest, the ethics act prohibits officials from using their position for personal gain. Mr. Toothaker's commercial apiary, which apparently has over one hundred rehives, violates the ordinance. This amendment would legalize his operation, benefiting him financially. He must disclose this conflict and recuse himself from deliberating or voting or risk violating the ethics act. Finally, a commercial apiary in a residential area creates safety zone concerns for residents as ordered. Lack of public discussion and the appearance of tailoring of this amendment for one individual erodes trust and invites evil challenges. So, I urge council to postpone the vote for the public deliberation, requiring Mr. Toothaker to disclose his conflict and accuse himself, and hold a public hearing to gather resident input. Thank you.
Get off there?
Yeah. Did you want to comment on it?
I was just saying, did you get all that, it was a lot.
Hearing, anyone else for public comment? Alright, hearing none. Uh, Chief Lutz, please report.
Give me board, give me ready thing. Put one second on it. We're going for only on sixty-two incidents. We had one report, one UCR crime, there was carrots, threats, and no court, two crimes. Well, it's showing a simple assault here, so, um, I'm reporting, so, simple assault. We issued five citations, twelve warnings, three, had a three domestic incidents, and twenty-one other calls, those being abandoned vehicles, gambling complaints, civil disputes. Distorted conduct, domestics, EMS calls, hookah bowls, harassment, decent exposure, repossession, officials, persons, traffic complaints, and welfare checks. As a result of that, uh, device that we requested to be struck on every out there, uh, we sat all everywhere. In the times that the device told us to, uh, sit there and area to stop a fair amount of individuals, and, uh, the other citations were warning for, up in the show for review. So, we had a complaint, uh, specific stop signs that were being violated, as well as to try to curtail that individual that was riding the dirt bike in the neighborhood after we spoke to them. That's all I have, do you have any questions for me?
You might have had dirt bike in Vegas today.
Oh, really?
What time? Four minutes.
You just don't have to take you, talk about what you.
He went down, he went down the train tracks.
You say a good warning?
I was supposed to.
Okay, well, the borough had an ordinance right now, give a verbal warning, and it's a thousand dollar fine. Second time you just passed it.
No, it's the, it's the ordinance.
Yeah, it's, okay. And it's a thousand dollar fine for a.
Sorry, Paul. If you send that to me in the email, we have to, aside, we're going to click forward, alright?
Yeah.
Just because you guys have an ordinance doesn't mean that's necessarily applicable violations, whenever it's occurred, so, um, I can at least alert my guys, I'm sure they're aware of those ordinances, and we have a tool for them, but.
I'll make sure you have one.
I can at least bring it to attention, at least have them read it again, just in case a violation occurs. Well, if you violate something else, correct the, the, the.
Sure. Is there anything like a place that goes along with, like, the railway, because if you recall at the railroad, they actually confiscate your flights?
Well, we catch him on the railroad property, what most likely will happen is a contact with railroad police, or from southern headroom, disquieting. Let down to deal with it, because he's riding on their property, which is most likely posted in some manner or fashion someplace. Let's have a deal with that aspect of riding on the work on the railroad tracks, we can take care of the other aspect of riding throughout the neighborhood, or do people that are in the boroughs.
But you wouldn't be able to do that for so many times, you wouldn't got to confiscate the flight, I mean, if it's.
It's not, it's not, it's not that easy just to take someone's personal property. We'd have to.
Well, I'm the way after, because I know the railway, but that's why I ask.
I mean, they have different similar qualifications, being a, the railroad police to put off a form or anything, basically a business entity, if you think about it, and the north side is a business. They have different set, civil regulations, uh, but as far as us taking someone's personal property, we have to keep it within the law, and if someone just committing repeated acts of violating the law, it usually give us the ability to just take someone's personal property. To keep, you know what I mean, we would take it to serve a search warrant and obtain evidence or whatever, but eventually they would give it back.
Right, I see what they do, like, in the city, where they're taking around, has a right to order, get all the order.
Most people would not be taking it for all. Thank you.
Governor, at the last meeting, we discussed trick or treat with you, you brought that up, I just have a question for you, was it your understanding at that meeting that we had agreed to making it on the thirtieth, or at that point, were you just asking us to consider, like, are your schedules made?
Why can't they ask me to consider?
Why?
Because I just need to know for staff, I pay overtime regardless to thirty through thirty-first, it doesn't matter, I bring extra people in for trick or treat, okay? Because it's the most, it's the only day of the year that you have these many people, that many people I want to work with. I just wanted to know so when I could give it out to my guys for overtime, whether it's the thirtieth or thirty-first.
That's what I'm asking.
I explained your cabin has theirs on the thirty-first, Newberry has theirs on the thirtieth, Barry has theirs on the thirtieth, Lewis Berry has theirs on the thirtieth, what other jurisdictions happen on the thirty-first? I don't really care, I just needed to know.
But that's why question is, is your schedule made right now because of our discussion at the last meeting at this point?
I did not.
Okay, because a lot of residents are still asking that, and I said that I would ask you personally that question at this meeting.
I did not.
Because it's being said that your schedule is made, and I just wanted to ask you that question.
Our schedule, well.
For trick or treat.
The schedule is made throughout the rest of the year for the officers, but this is an overtime detail, so that's only put out when I, we put it out, and that is not going to put out yet.
Okay.
For that specific.
That answers my question, thank you.
I have a question on that. Is there a reason why Newberry had asked us to change it after all these years?
Newberry would not ask us to change it. He asked, uh, chief, what his recommendation was.
Either our side or their side, why was it even brought up when Newberry's had it on the thirtieth, that, excuse me, Newberry has had it on the last per, of the month before Halloween, and we have had it on the thirty-first. Such official change that fifteen, eighteen years ago.
I'm not correct, man, but Newberry's not always been on the thirtieth before Halloween.
I just corrected myself, and I said the Thursday before Halloween.
Well, last year, they all, they all coincided with one another. Both rose the same time, short to the same time as Newberry.
I wonder if that's why, because of the date?
Might have been, I'm just saying, they all coincided.
It was the last Thursday before Halloween.
And it was, I did not earn anybody, I asked them what it was. Yeah, they answered, they asked the question, and I provided them the answer, then Newberry asked me the question, and that was it. I don't care when it is, I'm paying overtime regardless, so, nothing on you.
No.
No. No.
I just asked them to clarify what I've asked.
Any other? Thank you very much. Great meeting.
Thank you.
You're good.
Chief Smith, Fire Department.
Uh, the motion to approve the, uh, this report.
Make the motion back then.
All's in favor?
Alright.
Close. Chief Smith, Fire Department.
Uh, for the month of September, uh, we had twenty-three calls total, uh, twenty-eight oh two, three and twenty-seven, eighteen and thirty-one, and one and sixty-eight. Uh, we had one training session, one, uh, chimney fire, uh, how was the map, that's all.
Alright, any questions for the chief of Fire Department? Alright, any motion to approve the Fire Department?
Second.
All's in favor? Close. Mayor's report.
Okay, so, I'm going to balance this on the thirtieth. Starting off with dates for trick or treat, I don't recall that ever being completely agreed upon as far as being set for the thirtieth.
Trick or treat, we agreed to at the last meeting.
Hold on, hold on. For the last fifteen years, trick or treat has been held on the thirty-first, and that's all been documented, whether it be WGL, website, Fox forty-three, Penn Line, York dispatch. Here's the other thing, police coverage, it's a Friday, police are gonna be on duty anyways. And Friday's the thirty-first, so, police are gonna be on duty regardless. Uh, several residents have reached out to me, and at this time, I'm gonna read their letters, only because I'm required to. Dear Mayor and Council, I regret that I'm unable to attend the upcoming council meeting where Halloween twenty twenty-five will be discussed. As a resident of the borough, I would like to share my strongest torch for keeping Halloween on its traditional date of October thirty-first. Just as we do not move Christmas from December twenty-fifth for convenience, I believe Halloween should remain on October thirty-first. Since moving here several years ago, I greatly appreciated that our borough honors the holiday on its proper day. It has been a joy to decorate my home with great neighbors and hand out candy as part of the longstanding tradition. Thank you for considering my input in advance of your discussion. Second one, um.
Who wrote it?
And then Rachel D. Black, Rachel, Rachel D. Black, did you get that?
No, I didn't hear you.
Rachel D. Black.
Okay.
I'll give you a reading.
Yeah.
Uh, second one is from, uh, let's see here, Sylvia, uh, Swiger down the street here. Uh, she states, sorry to bother you, but is trick or treat changing? Um, I stated that it would be discussed openly at the borough meeting, or I would, uh, respond to that, uh, text that I received. Uh, again, I stress, police are gonna be on duty that day, on Friday, the thirty-first. Trick or treat for the last fifteen years was, uh, October thirty-first. I also have a list of documented sites that I have actually done my research on. I don't know how any of the other residents, uh, feel on that, but again, I think they would like to be visited.
I'd like to make a motion.
No, there's no motion. You can't bring up a motion in the middle of the meeting like that, that's beyond the agenda.
But we can't vote on what trick or treat date we want?
It's not, it's not up for motion. It's not.
Okay, so, please, if I ask the chief the question I did.
I said, I, it was one month.
But yeah.
Mine, it added up there.
The agenda is at the president's.
Yeah, it's part of the business, Ron.
Oh, no.
There's another new business statement, thing about.
The agenda is actually missed, mirror.
What's that?
They're carrying what the agenda is.
The agenda is, the agenda is at the president's, what is that, the president?
Agenda, sir, so, you, you just decided upon yourself that we're gonna have it on the thirtieth, and it doesn't matter what, the best.
I'm not talking to you about trick or treat.
Really?
I will give a legal explanation for all those who are interested. Typically, the president of the borough council prepares the agenda because he resides over the meeting. Now, you all adopted and followed Robert Cool's order for decorum, which includes beginning of the meeting, the approval of the agenda as presented was approved. So, we follow the agenda currently, now, that's not, we said that someone could motion to amend the agenda if it follows within, uh, the limitations under how you can amend the agenda at a given meeting, or essentially diminish changes, and don't spend money, or emergency items. But the correct course you could be following pursuant to what is the normal practice for preparing an agenda for official action and Robert Cool's order that was presented to you in order.
Sending the agenda aside, it wasn't on last month, it was a discussion with the chief, which is why I asked the chief himself personally that question, just hear me out. I asked him himself, were you to the understanding that we had agreed on the change, and he said, no, he said he suggested it, he asked us, but none of us agreed. Some, one person or two made that decision for us, for our community, for our residents, for our kids.
It was, we agreed to unanimously by all council members.
No, it was not, I did not agree to that.
Well, I didn't.
It was not on the agenda.
It may be on the agenda.
We did not agree, he agreed to considering what he had discussed.
It was agreed to at the last meeting.
In your minute. It could be in a minute, as I say, pull the video up and let's see the video.
We didn't agree to it. Our residents want to keep our trick or treat.
It was agreed to at the last meeting.
Or was that?
It was agreed to at the last meeting that it would be on the thirtieth.
No, it was not, it was not agreed.
Therefore, count, therefore, borough checked with the solicitor to see if an actual oral motion needed to be presented, did not, therefore, the borough advertised it as such.
The borough advertised it, but it was not agreed.
It was agreed to.
I didn't agree to it.
I didn't agree to it.
Ron, did you agree to it?
It was all discussed. It was all discussed.
It was discussed.
It was discussed, and on the day, we even hear Ron read it. It was not taken, it was not taken.
Who made the motion?
Moving on.
Who made the motion? No, who made, who made?
Moving on.
This is why.
I mean, I don't care.
So, I was.
So, you don't care about what the citizens want? I have plenty of other citizens that are asking for it to be on the thirtieth.
Right now, before, but you have to say it.
What?
Just can't do it, now, can't go to Dallas, bring, ten people will give it out, and.
Anything for them for the mayor, absolutely, I'm not even, no.
So, why are you here?
What, yeah.
A lot of people have, like, planned, I mean, if we, if we want to change it where it's Thursday before, like, a lot of the other places, that's fine, but, like, you gotta give people time, people who work, and they're all planning.
It was out in time, back in September, it's being on the thirtieth.
Yeah, and I just, it's a kind of thing, you kind of have to do it.
So, do we have a, a say?
Did you say we can amend it?
You can amend an agenda for limited purposes, uh, that is not authorized by our council. I don't understand was, the reason why the vice recommended previously for that meeting, the motion to approve it was because I didn't see any expenditure funds necessary, and it wasn't included on the agenda for an action item, that was a legitimate question of the meeting. Now, I would refer back to the minutes and the video as recorded to see whether or not consensus was agreed upon, but there is still a good point about information about on the thirtieth that would occur then, so there could be confusion created by ten people.
So, what we're showing our residents is we don't care what they think.
There's, there's other residents who wanted on the thirtieth.
After the meeting, and they got, they could watch the video, that everybody started coming forward, that they wanted to go on the thirtieth, not the thirtieth.
As the borough office, we got eighteen residents that either emailed us or called us, that was it.
Well, that should be enough.
Or maybe.
Why isn't that enough?
Because there's other residents who wanted on the thirtieth.
How many of them from your area?
I had several people reach out.
You just said eighteen for the thirty-first, so how many have thirty?
Nobody asked them to contact borough office.
Okay, so, one tire, and then four, and you want to go on thirty at that?
So, if.
And I understand.
That was nine hundred and some.
My question is, I.
I can, you're just making a number now.
How can you just assume that it was here?
I can't assume that there was.
Who's here?
Okay, questions aside.
I'm not, I don't care either, I'd say what.
That, that's not, they're not letting us do what we want to.
I understand, but they're broke.
No.
One last.
You make one with the mayor.
Alright. General maintenance, uh, you said the general maintenance is completed, correct?
No.
Well, in the.
General maintenance of the borough?
Well, the tree trim.
That's, that's only what we reported here.
Well, yeah, that's not my question, in the minutes, it states that it's completed, right?
It's completed, but we have money for it to share.
Okay, alright. So, listed out, that pool was completed.
Fishing Avenue.
Okay.
Water Street, Blackburger Avenue.
Does that include seven North York Street, First Avenue between Fraser and Butcher, uh, First Avenue and Ziggler?
First Avenue, uh.
And Fraser and Butcher for the shrubbery and trees, that was on?
Not so true.
Not butcher.
This here, it says between Fraser and Butcher, down there.
We did between, uh, First Avenue and Second Avenue, on Pennsylvania Avenue.
Okay, Pennsylvania, not First Avenue.
Right.
Okay, so there's, okay, was that, that wasn't on the list to do?
Yes.
It was?
It was hanging out on the third.
It, it was?
It was, yep.
On First Avenue and Fraser.
On Pennsylvania Avenue.
Okay, Pennsylvania Avenue, okay, yes. But I'm talking about Fraser, not Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania, not Fraser. So it's doing on Fraser.
Fraser and First Avenue, down there by the, the fence area.
But...
Oh, but, yeah.
Yeah, well, not yours, but, on the other side, on, on the other side.
Yeah.
Yeah, up by where the, um, uh, on the other side of, I think it's Butcher and First.
Would be the Marina's parking fence.
It's where the boats are stored at.
Yeah.
So nothing was done there.
Yes, we put the trees back on both sides of the grid, of First Avenue.
All right, uh, First Avenue and Ziegler Avenue, stormwater boxes. What are the plans for that?
I think it'll be renovated.
Okay, and are they gonna get stuck together like fishing creek, or are they gonna be placed properly based on engineers?
We have a bunch of you releasing us out there.
Um, sorry, move on. Excuse me, hey, I, I just asked a question.
It's all your business, you got nothing to do with it.
Well, it is my business, because I'm gonna ensure that the residents aren't coming bottoming out cars. Hold on, bottoming out cars coming into that. That asphalt has broken up completely because of the water sitting in there and freezing. Have you noticed that? Probably not, just along with that sinkhole that's still sitting there.
Been there for one year now.
Yeah, that sinkhole, I'm sure it has.
It has been.
Okay, whatever you say.
It was a tree along the way.
Um, I did have a question, the transformer at the fishing hole. Uh, there was a transformer at the end of that line. Was that put in by the borough?
Yep.
And the purpose for that?
Of the lake.
Okay.
And the outlets.
What were the outlets?
Was it fishing area?
What they're, they're not holding it anymore.
I know that, but it's, we get to sit it before we do, or, that we done it for that reason.
Okay, all right, um, budget, moving on to budget. Um, in the budget here in the second meeting, at the timestamp nineteen twenty, you had mentioned about four thousand dollars a year for volunteer tax credit?
Nope.
That wasn't mentioned in no way?
Nope. Has nothing to do with the fire company is not any kind of budget in our borough.
No, 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 volunteer emergency service tax credit.
Not in our borough.
Okay.
There's not a dollar or figure anywhere for that, nowhere.
Well, then, where was, where was the four thousand coming from?
Coming from the one tenth of a mill. And I said the fire company with their tax credit will feed up after that.
With what?
With their tax credit.
Really? How much was paid out of this tax credit?
I don't know, but if, if way down there, does it, it would be a couple thousand dollars.
Two people, did two people qualify for that? Total of three hundred dollars. I don't think that adds up to four thousand, does it?
How many people down there?
I asked a question, does it?
There is some four thousand dollars, that was something put out here as a...
Really? So it's not on video?
Nope.
Oh, well, I'll make sure I go back and watch out again. And anybody else who'd want, it's out here. It's out. Um, bids, status of snow removal.
So we signed on there.
Who?
We certainly backed it last year.
So we did put the bid out?
Yes, we did put it out.
Okay.
The, the bid's under, it's under eleven thousand dollars.
Oh, so only when it goes over eleven thousand does it need to off the bid?
Exactly.
And, and, and we know it's not going to go over eleven thousand?
No, no.
Because I think in years past, we put out bids for snow removal.
Yes, but they, they...
Okay, so gas we have, but now we don't have to.
They changed the bid right here.
Oh, okay.
We can check on that on the state, is the, pardon, didn't you say they changed the state?
And that was signed by you for the contract and agreed upon by council?
No.
Oh, so it was signed by you but not agreed on by council? I'm gonna say that one more time, signed by you but not agreed by...
By the territory item.
Okay.
The funds are approved when the budget is signed, when the budget...
And that was discussed in the budget?
Yeah, that was discussed in the budget.
That's all I have for the mayor's.
No more questions?
Maybe later.
All right, excuse me, what'd you say?
I'm sorry.
I need a motion to approve the mayor's report. Second, all's in favor? Pose. Uh, ELH computers and water company. I need a motion to approve, is there any discussion on the, uh, ELH PD and water company reports? Carry on, I need a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
All's in favor? Pose. Engineer? No. Okay, you have a motion to approve the engineer's report? Second? All's in favor? Pose. Solicitor's report?
All right, the first item, the solicitor's update on draft, the blank handbook I distributed in the draft. You all, thank you, Ron, for providing me a copy for what you thought would be a helpful version of the handbook, which I understand is not currently in place. Um, I started making edits to it, but then realized it probably wouldn't be easiest for me to provide you all with a trimmed down version of policy that I know has gone in effect in success in our municipality, I believe, sir. Uh, this is, uh, tailored to best that I could to the specific employees of Gold Borough. Um, I would welcome comments to it, it's part of the draft, um, whatever you think changes, uh, you think best fit with that put together policy, I'm happy to talk to you further. The reason why I suggested this instead of the version that was provided to me is it has a little more context for procedure on how to administer, I appreciate your eyes. Uh, and having those questions answered in advance is the best way to avoid, uh, potential unwanted circumstances when enforcing policy. So, uh, it's there for you all to, to review, it's not necessarily on the round, so.
To make that...
Yep.
Get to the next meeting.
Yep, please, uh, do you want it, give me your feedback before the next meeting, I'm happy to make any edits for your consideration.
Um, next item, update on property owner agreement for connection to service. This is the Felton property with, that requested to be connected. Uh, I had some back and forth with Charlie on getting rough costs for the physical connection. Uh, and I also included, uh, in the agreement that I'm preparing, legal costs that would have to be incurred in order to submit additional public utility commission that I have now previously. So that agreement, uh, is nearing the finalization, and I would like to speak with the property owner beforehand, just so that I can explain any questions that they may have at the meeting, but, uh, that should hopefully be done in the near future.
All right, and I have a question about that. Yeah, has any, uh, has anyone reached out to the municipality regarding that matter too?
I haven't heard anything.
Because I thought that was under, uh, state guidelines that, uh, borough that owns their own electric company has to reach out to a neighboring municipality if they're looking to provide power.
So that's...
They are doing, we're working...
So Newbury doesn't provide power to Med Ed?
No, they're not. We are selling it to them through our lines, right?
Yes, so Med Ed is already representing their gum wish to provide service.
Correct, but the borough does.
Correct, well, so willing to.
Correct, so the borough has to reach out to the neighboring municipality.
Well, the neighboring municipality does not provide power.
Okay, I understand that Med Ed has...
Yeah, they've, we've reached out to Med Ed and coordinated with them. Yes, the purpose of the petition that I'm preparing for public utility commission is because it's going outside municipal boundaries, is that right?
Yeah, I guess that...
Okay.
Have you got a letter from the property owner stating that Med Ed does not provide service?
We've gotten an email from Med Ed directly. So that's something that we would attach in the, as an exhibit to the petition that is eventually submitted to the public utility commission, because what they want to see is also that power is not otherwise offered to that property, so that will be something that we include in the petition.
And where's PUC's there?
PUC, uh, has taken, there's a history of case law from PUC that says that they are okay with discreet, uh, provision of service outside municipal boundaries if the same protections that are afforded ordinary rate payers within your municipality are also given to those without. And then you also put in other protections in place, uh, like, uh, the service will not be provided to the public, it's only limited to these discreet properties, and if anything changes to that effect, we have to have a commission first before making those changes. Because the commission serves as a protective authority from everyone who receives service, so really, all they're working for is to make sure that, uh, any rate payer will be protected.
We have no resources, right, in the sense that we are prohibited from public power.
You already are.
We have no power, we're...
You already are.
Chel, the last house in Chelmsford, not in borough.
Yep.
In Newbury, Chelmsford.
The important consideration is that you don't follow the definition of the public utility, which is making service available to the public. That's the shorthand definition of it under the Public Utility Code. Once you start doing that, then you're subject to the commission's jurisdiction, and it's something that you all will avoid.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion about this solicitor's report?
I did have one other item that's not under here, but I remembered it when I was doing the minutes for last meeting. You all had asked me to look into the hall rental agreement, I was providing a copy of that this morning. There are some provisions that I would like to revise that relate to indemnity, um, and insurance, so I'll have a draft for that available to you at your next meeting.
All right, I need a, uh, motion to approve the solicitor's report?
I'll make that motion.
Second? All's in favor?
All right.
Pose. Uh, committee reports, building and grounds. Brush cutting alone. All right, emergency management?
I don't have anything.
Finance? Uh, three percent...
Yeah, the mortgage, the three percent increase, the mortgage fund, probably, for Fund Six. Yes, general fund. General fund revenues, six seventy, six hundred seventy-five thousand, eight hundred sixty-three. General fund expenses, six hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred sixty-eight, with a balance of seventeen thousand, three hundred ninety-five. Electric utility fund, utility fund revenue, one point one five six, uh, one million, two hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars. And utility fund expense, eight hundred twelve thousand, with a balance of three hundred forty-four thousand, six hundred twenty-five. More fund, more fund revenues, two hundred two thousand, two hundred ninety-one. More fund expenses, one hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred twenty, sorry, so the balance is sixty-six thousand, two hundred seventy-one dollars. State motor fund, state motor fund revenues, two hundred nine thousand, seven hundred forty-five thousand. State motor fund expenses, one hundred one thousand, five hundred dollars, balance of one hundred eight thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars.
Um, last one on here is motions to approve the notice of the proposed twenty twenty-six budget for Avon House. That's the duty right now. Sure, yep. Second?
This is a procedural step required from the borough code to involve in the approving of proposed budget that would then be out for thirty days for inspection for the public. A copy will be available for the borough office as well for all those interested, uh, and then eventually, after that thirty days had lasted, you approve the final budget before the end of the year. Uh, there is a peculiarity though here, where I believe there's less than thirty days before your next meeting, so either you do it at your December meeting, or you also have the option of calling a special meeting after the thirty days has lasted.
So I make a motion to approve the notice of, of the proposed twenty twenty-six budget for Avon House. That's the duty right now.
Sure, yep.
Second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Pose. All right, um... Thank you for all of our planning. Rec, we have, uh, thank you for all those who were able to attend the Fall Fest and the December second, the Christmas tree laying square. Um, sanitation sewer, don't have any... Streets and highways, if you replace numerous stop signs throughout the borough. And the pavileros for new student signs to install a state route.
Yeah, that's why you're going down. That, the way you look at that, the only good for south. If they can't enforce it going north, and they can't enforce it going south the other way.
Yes, so the word is the model after what we have received in communication from the state through the on, where to place stop signs. We've got, we've got, we've got all of these, yes. Well, it's a, it's a state revenue, so it's gonna be posted.
Okay, I just seen south, I'm thinking of the white.
I just, I modeled it based off of the Florida.
General and electric utility water, uh, received new power transformers installed. All right, any motion to accept the committee reports?
I'll make that motion.
Second? All's in favor? Pose. All right, unfinished business, motion to accept and adopt ordinance twenty-five dash two, authorizing placement of twenty-five mile speed limit sign on state route. SR ten twenty-three, reporting specifically for recognition approval.
What's out, time on the south? Our speed limit sign.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All's in favor? Pose. All right, um, councilperson's comments, uh, Will?
Um, I'm not gonna say much, but I am gonna say that if we don't protect the deadline, it's gonna be on Water Street by state, it's gonna override the ordinances that they want to last.
Mike?
Um...
Ron? Gini? Ron?
No.
Bill?
I just think it's not right that we're not having Halloween on the thirty-first, that's it, but it's just wrong, people want it... Yeah, they're gonna, well, you're gonna have people that already said that, they're not gonna end up handing it on the thirty-first. Um, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, uh, or Fire Chief, are we, as the fire company, are we going to do our thing on the thirty-first or the thirty-second?
Thirty-first.
Okay, so we'll be up at the square, is that correct?
Yes.
We'll be up at the square on the thirty-first for Halloween, for our Halloween candy gift. What do you mean, not on our property? It's on, it's on our property.
All right, you said the square, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, you're right, I, you're right, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, it's, it's okay. All right, um, discussion and motion to accept and adopt ordinance, oh, I'm sorry, citizen marks for the second, uh, time? Anyone has any comments to come up, so you name and act to the record, doesn't make time for three minutes.
All right, we have all four of you. Um, this town is speaking to address concerns regarding actions of borough solicitor, which are thought by Pennsylvania law jeopardize the rule of community of Goldsboro. His actions undermine transparency, legislative authority, and impartial enforcement, exposing the borough's illegal challenges and eroding public trust. Urges the council to investigate and consider removing Mr. Ed Gaffey-Forey to protect our community. Uh, solicitor's actions include the encouragement of illegal appointments. We all remember back in October twenty-four, uh, solicitor advisory appointing council members, Kansas area guides whose terms exceeded their legal appointments by ten months. Violating Royal Code Sections eighty-one and nine oh one. Obstructing ordinance enforcement, solicitor discourages mayor from enforcing ordinance against council members' beekeeping operation. Underrunning mayor's authority under ten eighty-seven, and the solicitor's duty to prosecute violations. This suggests favoritism, potentially violating the Ethics Act. Solicitor justified council president's unilateral rescheduling of a regular meeting by labeling it a special meeting. However, this change was not formally advertised as a special meeting in accordance with Borough Code one thousand and six. Uh, there was no council vote to approve this change in compliance with requirements of one thousand and ten to one met. Allowing nineteen ordinance publication, solicitor permitted advertising of ordinance amendment to the council and adoption of our vote, usurping the legislative authority under thirty-three oh one. Uh, which could remedy amendment voidable under Coke versus Borough Greenfield. Ignoring invalid ordinances, the solicitor refused to remove the ordinances passed by a minority seated members, neglecting his duty to ensure compliance. Such act, such action may be voided under Betrover versus Pittston Dairy School District. And as that selected enforcement of our tools. These actions violate solicitor's duty to provide impartial lawful advice and diminish professional ethics. Expose goals of borough to Sunshine Act suits, ethics act violations, pending investigations, limiting valid ordinances, threatening our community. Transparency and integrity are vital for both borough's governance and urge swift action to safeguard the community. And in the meantime, if you could bring up a motion if you'd like to change on the week. That's your opinion. All right, um, any other comments? Hearing none. Discussion and motion to accept and adopt ordinance twenty-five dash three, meaning the chapter two of the Code of Ordinances of Oldsboro of Goldsboro by meaning section two dash three oh one and two dash three oh two relating to the regulation keeping domestic and exotic animals in the borough. And providing penalties for any correlation thereof. In order of saving from all this. Okay, um... They want to open discussion for it? Council members?
I've already done so, I wanted that this morning.
But now... This is the advertised time to...
Right, you won't get paid by this place.
At home.
I have my time. Was any of this taken with your busy?
Yes.
Okay, because none of that is at this...
Correct, so let me just give the precursor. Um, the simple amendment before you is to change what is currently in effect under Borough Code, which is an outright prohibition on bees throughout the borough. This now can change or propose change, uh, would limit that prohibition to Africanized bees. Uh, there are any number of ways to pursue changes to the current existing legal authority for the borough. Uh, it could be, as Doug suggests, a more comprehensive ordinance model after the state beekeeper association, which has been for the past. Uh, it could be pursuing advertising of public owners and public hearing to make these changes incorporated into the borough zoning ordinance. If there are particular concerns best addressed there. This change does not do that. This change is limited to the current Borough Code and essentially swaps out of bees for Africanized bees. So this is a duly advertised, uh, time for borough council to deliberate on the proposed change to its ordinance. I've heard people dispute whether or not the advertisement was legally sufficient. I would maintain that it is not a legislative act to advertise ordinance and or allow us to do administrative action in compliance with the Borough Code. With the Borough Code and the Sunshine Act for the official action for borough council inevitably, which is this deliberation here. That's why it is a duly advertised time for you all to discuss it now.
Uh, Mike? I would like, okay, first off, I have withheld any kind of enforcement of any ordinance whatsoever in form of letter sent to any property owner.
Correct, and I would like, I would like to add, I was not directing you to do that.
Okay, and I understand that, but I have provided you with this.
Correct, and I have...
Okay, who took it upon themselves to do this?
I did.
Okay, my question is, take that and do that.
It is an option for borough council to do that, which is why I said this is the time to deliberate on it.
But, but we just had you draft this up.
I did not draft that.
Who drafted?
I did.
Okay, was it reviewed by you?
I looked at it, I saw the minor change, which I summarized here.
Okay, so it was reviewed by you. Again, I would like to see something like this incorporated into the current ordinance.
To go something further would cost significantly more than what it does just for bees and replace it with Africanized bees, which was done because in their, in the model ordinance that they submitted to me. Um, it did specifically spell out and define Africanized honeybees.
What if I know that they don't have Africanized honeybees in the United States?
In the Beekeepers Association, in their model ordinance, it specifically defines Africanized honeybees. Therefore, I figured there was a good cause for them to do that, and I included it.
I just would note that they need to be adjusted before we're going to live games, like it is, like having a hive here allowed and stuff like that. We have other issues here.
Well, then you can vote no.
Well, I'm going to no at this time. I'll table it for a further discussion when council discusses something like it should have been done the first time.
That is entirely within your discretion to do. I would like to characterize, because somebody else characterized my communications with Doug, I'm holding off on enforcement. The advice that I gave was to not pursue enforcement of a law that was being considered for amendment to create unsafe grounds for enforcement in the future. That was the advice that I gave. I did not direct him to do anything. Doug's prerogative to enforce the laws as he sees fit, and he made it a discretion there to continue talking about that.
Well, I mean, Alan, I will point this out on record. I did make that known, that I would not be enforcing any ordinance whatsoever with the understanding to the borough council president that that is incorporated into it in some manner, not in its, hold on, not in its entirety. We need better spelling out of what are the requirements, not just solely this.
I'm fine with just removing the word bees and adding the definition for Africanized honeybees. I don't think we need to spend money and make a long crazy ordinance on some bees. There are several residents in the borough who have bees and are subject to enforcement under the current law.
He's the one who put them in risk.
No, he's not. There are several residents throughout the borough who have bees.
I know of two other residents in the Chelms. That's the only two I know of.
I know more than that.
I know that perfect. But having two hives is different than two hundred hives. That's, uh, big difference.
Scale matters.
So is it a hobby farm? Is it a commercial business? Is it a zone agricultural? I mean, if you look at the other town, is that a zone agricultural?
To go down that road is going to cost significantly more money, because now you're talking zoning and you're, you're, you're going down the road.
Oh, that's when it's, yeah, you normally broke the mortgage, and when I...
You knowingly broke the ordinance when you rode your four wheel on the street last year.
I know, I've done that for years. Well, I always found the sidewalk, I never had any problems until one time.
For one time, the ordinance was passed.
The ordinance was passed afterwards.
No, it wasn't, it was badly for that. I got called Mexican because of it. To get things back centered on you, this is a policy decision for borough council to consider. If it believes that an O B's, uh, is the direction they want to go, you can vote no. If you think that something more thorough is necessary here, you can either vote yes and continue developing that, or you can vote no and continue developing that. This is entirely a policy decision. As I mentioned in the beginning, you can also approach this through your zoning ordinance. Uh, that would require more procedural compliance, however, you have to coordinate with the local planning commission, the county planning commission, advertise the public hearing, uh, pursue the public notice, and then do a zoning ordinance under that way. Here, uh, is confined to the code, which has less procedural compliance.
I'd like to point out for the record too, I received a mail, uh, email from Iden, the solicitor, borough solicitor, stating, um, I would encourage revisiting the adoption of an ordinance reflecting the same. I can look for other sample ordinances to concern in addition to the model ordinance provided. Though again, as provided, the model ordinance was given to both yourself and to the solicitor for review. All I'm looking for is to go down and add some additional wording in there to limit the hives. I have said this from day one when this first came up. I have absolutely none of a single problem with any honeybees or apiaries or any business in this borough. But I can tell you right now, as a mayor, I will stand behind my seal and enforce any ordinance. If, if it's the choice of the council to go ahead and approve the ordinance, the amended ordinance, go ahead and approve it. I'll veto it, then backdate the, uh, letter and send that out to the borough of the property owner.
That's fine, that's what you want to do.
And that's, it's not up to me, it's based off of what council does.
You're just saying you're going to veto it.
But, but I'm suggesting, and again, this was drafted up with no regard to what was sent to you or to the solicitor. So, I don't know.
All right, it's another way.
Is there any other discussion on it?
What are we doing, a vote here?
All right, is there a motion to accept and adopt the ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? I'll make the second. Uh, do you hear a lot of them? Um, all those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
All right. Doug, you are free to enforce the ordinance as you see fit.
Well, right now I plan not to, if it's, if the borough council is willing to revisit and writing and proper wording of an ordinance. That wouldn't have a problem voting yea, if it's done right. If it's done right, that's good, right? I don't have a problem.
I think all we all want is a number of hives that you're about. We say yes to this, then there's fifty more tomorrow. I think all any of us are asking is what are the limitations?
Would borough council like me to prepare a proposed ordinance amendment consistent or incorporating elements of the model ordinance that address the number of hives?
Yes.
Number of hives. And then you got like the neighboring towns should be fair, you're not allowed to have bees on the property unless it's zone agricultural.
That is a separate, that's a separate action, would you like it to be phrased as a zoning ordinance amendment? I can do that as well.
No, at this point in time, Mr. Mayor, if I may interject, I don't, I'm not looking to push any, and I've said this again until I'm blue in the face. I'm not looking to, to do away with the honeybees, and I can't emphasize that enough. The zoning, that's not an issue. Allow them to have it, or put a cap on, and limitation within Greece. That's all I'm asking.
Scale is my issue. Number of...
Pardon me?
Scale is my issue, like number of, of hives.
I think that's all for, that's all we're all asking, I think. Is what is moving to be counted.
All right, uh, smart thermostat program. Uh, we have a resolution to enter the borough, the customers into the Goldsboro, oh, Goldsboro, E L H P into the utility control, smart thermostat.
So what's this mean? You're going, you want to enter my home with a thermostat?
Well, we'll be able to watch and remotely control your thermostat.
No, no, no.
It's, that's a lot of...
But they come in and want to regularly. How many times?
It's done by multiple or many public utility electric companies that have included control smart thermostats.
I'm going to...
Seven, seven, you're all with that? I didn't, I think that's all I was getting about it, but I didn't, I didn't see any... What?
Someone sent it on my hand or...
Yeah, our, our, my, this junior has, has sent it.
Okay, I'm sorry, because there's a lot of stuff being talked about. It's like it's explaining exactly what it is that we have been requested to do. I, I couldn't hear anybody.
Nobody requested to do it. We're asking if anybody has, that they want to do this. And our life provider is offering us to, uh, to our residents, smart meter. Smart, they have thermostat. Smart thermostat, I'm sorry. They will come and with the equipment in our office, okay, and it regulates your thermostat.
So if I have my thermostat set at seventy-eight in winter time because I live, I should live at the equator, you can control it to turn it back to sixty-eight degrees.
Right, so...
I can make sure I'm good, and I also wear air conditioning wash if you have central air. If I have set the fifty degrees, I'll just turn it up to seven.
Typically, it's one of the selling, typically it's one of the selling points of the smart thermostat.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I can't hear you now, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Typically, it's one of the selling points of like your Google Nest thermostat, one of the smart thermostats is the ability to get rebates from your electric provider.
So that's what I want to know. So what are the rebates?
We don't know that.
Okay.
That's... These guys can vote for it or vote against it, whatever they want to do.
You want to put a little more on my wall?
I, I would just suggest to the president that if, before you'll vote on it again, please, please share what those rebates might be.
Yeah.
Because I can't see anybody other place that I've heard about this before, and a lot of people adopt the smart thermostat. There must be a reason why people are okay with the, somebody controlling your thermostat, the incentives must be very nice.
Oh, likelihood it would be on our, on our wholesale amount, and then the borough would have, the borough's electric, E I H P would have to set whatever rebate it was. Um, that being said, no resident would be forced into it.
Right, that's if you want to.
It would just allow us, if residents want to opt into it, to be able to provide it.
So we give them an option?
They just wanted us to offer them this...
What it does is it takes you somewhere here to do it.
Did they, did they give it deadline or they were just offering it as?
Does it have any limitations? My, my fear would be that it goes to an extent later and say that, okay, we are, we are forcing you to...
Should be in your path.
The limits of what it's...
One, one thing I might caution on that is one of the big drivers in our electric, in our electric cost that we buy from it is a thing called capacitor. And they look at what our capacitance is, and that's the extra generating amount, I'm going to say with a lack of better term, that they keep on, that they keep on backup for us. So we have a, we have a capacity clause so that when it gets extremely hot or extremely cold, they have a capacity built in to give us that additional power that we're requiring at those times.
And that capacity isn't at a higher cost than our regular rate?
Well, I would go even one step further and say that the capacity portion of the rate that we pay is much more volatile by the way that's being handled at this point.
Right.
And we're seeing jumps in the capacities, capacity portion or electric bills of, of not necessarily percentages, but of significantly more, maybe even double. So now that's just a small portion of our electric bill, but it's the most volatile and the biggest piece of our electric bill seems to be increasing. And this may be, and I don't know this, this may be a way to help us trim when we're getting whacked with a big capacity.
Yeah, I would assume that big capacity.
What is the biggest draw of this electric capacity? I mean, they, they, how are they doing with power going? So who'd be wanting to draw all the, this?
It's not identified on a resident type level. It's, it's looked at as us as a, yeah, as a borough's pool. And then what they do is they look at what our highest, you know, energy bill was, and it balances between whether it's July or February. It seems like that's when the two highest energy consumption amounts are. And they look at a portion of that as being a capacity. And they look at a portion of that as being a capacity that they have to be able to provide, and that's the premium portion of our electric purchasing that is the most volatile. And I can only imagine this is something to maybe help trim those very, very highest, you know, very, very coldest days to try and trim it back a little bit and deal with very hottest days. And, and that, I'm just saying, the capacitance is a part that's gonna drive our electric bill.
Do you know like formally where they draw that line? Because it seems like they're going above a certain level habitually. Why would they have some kind of formula to determine how many people and power they're needing for?
Don't know anything about that.
No, they don't.
I would agree with this to see if, if there is ever kind of the opportunity now and say, oh, due to X, Y, and Z, we are going to control everybody's.
No, they, they can't do that.
Well, I. I know, but what if they say, oh, due to, you know, they're putting these data centers under where that require a ton of electricity, that do top on those capacities, um, that make the electric more prudent for everybody. All of a sudden, that, well, to make it so, to make it feasible, you're gonna have to, just because the electric bill is too high.
Then you're gonna have too many, which no matter what, we won't control it. They will.
Yeah, how about if they vote on it?
Yeah, but I'm saying, it's not going to do with the.
I would, to the opportunity to worry, but they're just like, oh, they're just.
But if they can.
Maybe they want to manate it.
They'll just raise the rate. They'll just increase the rate.
Right. Or you remember the blackouts in that one?
Or brownouts, right, that's what I was saying, they'll just do brownouts and nothing you can do about it, like they do in California.
They did it here.
There's a number.
No, that's not opt-in, not opt-in to brownouts.
It feels like.
What is that, when you provide?
Extreme control portion.
And I don't want.
To your point, it's somewhat related to this current discussion, but there is our proposed legislative basis and public utility commission hearing going on to deal with our middle customers, because data centers are increasingly considering for the community. So, that's unresolved, but that is the tension. Again, it's not related to your.
So, being off of what Mike said, because he's got a tour, and that's a fine print of whatever they sent you, they're willing to give you the software, but is there a stipulation of how many homes have to participate for the town not to have to pay them back for the equipment?
We haven't done any of that kind of very important.
So, I was being concerned about that.
This is just an ordinance, regardless, regardless of what's our, that we could get into this program if we want to.
We need more information. Before we decide anything.
They haven't said anything else.
Any motion? Approve it, approve it. Approve it.
Table, make a motion to table.
So, I guess, hey.
Step.
All those in favor? Opposed? All right, the discussion, motion to direct the solicitor to draft an ordinance and advertise and increase the borough's mileage rate for 2026.
We had some discussion about that in the, the budget meeting. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to think about it or that, but, and to keep me straight here, I believe we're one point one mill. And the discussion was, your, your recommendation was to go up three tenths of a mill.
What's that figure?
It would be one, one point two would be one tenth of a mill.
Right.
Which on the average term would be about a ten dollar, you know, ten dollar year increase. The other one would be a one point two five mill, which would be about a hell of a lot. Now, we didn't, we didn't do any tax increase last year. We had a couple other things going on, and then we weren't able to make that happen. But I think we need to discuss if we want to go with, you know, any mileage increase, but that mileage increase should pay.
Wouldn't you say one point two was what, ten dollars per hour?
Yeah, if the math I'm looking at on the sheet that we got last time, it looks like it's about a ten dollar increase to go one point two on an average.
Why, why, why is this a lot?
Because we need money to do something. You heard the complaint about one or something?
Yes, once they're fixed, then they get it back?
No.
No, no.
And all of them.
Well, we're also had a discussion what that was gonna cost.
We don't know.
Either, I mean, we would have to raise taxes, you know?
But you guys are talking pennies by going one mill, that's four thousand dollars a year. That would put in two twenty foot pieces of plate. That's it. So, that's what I say, if you could do a new tenth of a mill, that would be eight thousand dollars for the borough. That we could put in four sections a year.
For every year proceeding?
Right, right.
So, to maintain it, we require the same amount of play.
Yes, everything, shall we make replacement, everything?
Have we considered special assessment tax to those that would be directly affected?
Instead of that.
Did you have consideration for a special assessment, or those that would be directly considered?
No.
Not directly affected?
Because you have storm bring down there, you can play two or something there.
So, if I were to special assessment to pay for that for a period of time and then go back to previous mileage rate?
Oh, yeah, but it, it might like time, so you guys can do that. Now, if it's quick to go on that, so, um, I'm just trying to find money to, now, I get that, that's all, and I'm talking about special assessment.
I think what you're, what you're, so what you're saying was for root?
For root?
To reflect, to flat, redo, to re-blackout the roads, accurate and stuff.
I meant.
We're talking hundreds of thousands.
Hundreds of thousands.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars. Any increase is gonna be one year for you, like a whole worth of it.
Yes.
Still getting my range.
So.
I say one point two.
Pardon?
I say one point two.
If you go to one point two five, that's not helping, just an extra five. Then next year, we gotta do a little more. Yeah, I think we did discuss that in the.
One point two five.
Yeah, one point two five.
How, I, how?
I mean, we gotta go.
I mean, nobody wants to raise any tax.
No. I mean, it's inevitable, tax. It would be one and one half tenth.
One and one half?
Tenth, yes.
No, no way it's.
One point five.
No way it's. What we're, what we're talking about there is a point one five.
Yeah, point one five, right.
Point one five.
Yeah, point one five, sorry.
I put my point one five.
Decimal places get everything.
Point one five.
What was that?
Point one five, one and a half tenth.
Oh, okay, point one five. And then we'll give the borough how much extra?
It'd be about six thousand. Pretty round there, so pretty around six thousand.
And that's for fifteen dollars per household?
Yeah, 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 well, somewhere thirteen.
How many microphones for deaf people?
Well, it'd be like fifteen, fifteen extra dollars for a household.
I'm wearing a hearing aid and I still can't hear you, because I've been deaf for fifty years. What did he say, like one bro to? Oh, no, I.
Depends on.
No, I was asking how much the borough will, will make. The borough will make.
Six thousand dollars. Six years.
Only six thousand dollars.
A year.
That don't even make sense, but okay. Thank you.
Can I, did I put a motion on?
No.
No, I'd like to make a motion to increase the tax, tax to one point two five mils. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those?
Aye.
So, just so everybody's clear on the procedures for that, the advertisement can go out with the ordinance required by ordinance to adopt. They're required to increase mileage rates by ordinance, and if you don't increase, you do a resolution. So, I'll advertise that, but the adoption of that ordinance has to be after the budget is approved. So, that's gonna be the order of operations. We'll advertise it, the budget will have to be adopted.
So, likely, we'll have a special session in November, or a special meeting in November to, to.
Either adoption of the budget after thirty days, or you can do a special meeting in December for, for this increase, whatever is preferred, but that's gonna be as a timeline, so. It's just for finer purposes.
So, what are we gonna do?
We don't, we don't. We already made a motion. No, we can't approve the motion.
Oh, okay. Now that we.
Discussing timing. I was asking about a certain.
All right, um, next is motion to approve the 2026 SPCA contract. To make your package.
What do they do again for the borough?
That's crazy. Seven hundred ninety dollars.
They come take care of these feral cats?
Yes.
Yeah.
They don't look like it.
They have body parts. Does there is so many?
What?
You mean, does there is so many?
Yeah.
Yeah, wherever, where, do they give you the numbers?
So, like, where are we, where are they doing it?
Would you imagine?
We're driving off of Charlie's farm, he can use the farm.
I don't like the one though.
Yeah.
C I.
I'd like to make a motion to reapprove the 2026 SPCA contract. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Charlie, you had said previously on this SPCA that they had a, a tax community coordinator for us?
Yeah.
Can you give more information on that? So, that authority. That would be all. Community cap. Hopefully, they can help provide some transportation for.
You can't transport. You can't move, feral cats.
Transport to get a T R.
That's fine, but feral cats need to be brought back to where they, where they were taken.
Right, yeah. I meant transport.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, I've trapped several of them, however, it's pretty convenient to take off work to go down there and drop them off.
I did seven in a week, two weeks ago. In Pinkford.
Thank you, Jean, for doing that.
Yeah, I'm saying, saying, you guys can do so many. Run it then.
And then you probably have.
I pick one up, drop one off, pick one up, drop one off.
I do the same thing.
But all of a sudden, we got spade digger, and then, you know, we're looking for homes, found homes for some. The big issue is the, the penny fund, but we're still working on it.
All right, um, motion for a resolution to set trash recycling fee to reflect new charges, new trash recycling contract.
We have a, we have a new game.
Yeah, they, the trash fee, uh, is set in the fee schedule, it's renewed every January. So, in January, that can be set to whatever, so whatever council at the time feels is necessary to cover the cost of, of trash.
Right. So, I think it was discussed if we could bring it down to thirty-three dollars instead of what was it? Well, we have to.
Same, same as was the new contract, it's actually a great deal.
What, no.
Don't look back at him.
The new. I, I look where I'm going with.
The new contract is the same as the old contract, the exact same price.
I went over to the public this morning. Okay, well, we didn't know that because you just went over, right?
Yes.
Okay?
I would be proud of the contract.
What?
New contract in effect now?
It's in September, yep.
Is it costly to move over?
No, it never was lower. It was higher, it never was lower.
So, um, that's currently on the agenda for a motion, so we need a motion to work on, I guess, either to table it or to ban it or approve it, I guess.
Not seeing as there's any.
Proof?
Of order.
Right, it's, it's, yeah, typically, you have.
So, is it a motion to award through public services, or is it?
No, no, so this, these are items that are on request, that need added to the agenda, and we did so to honor the request. But typically, this is done in January, and there will be some math set forward for you on what that change would be. And then it's all working back from the contract and whatever fees are associated. So, it's done annually in January typically.
So, we're gonna table this till June?
Well, yeah, it will be on the, for a previous fee schedule.
When we.
That may reorganize.
Okay. So, we don't have that call?
No.
Yeah, it says vote a motion if there's.
I'll make a motion to table that until we normally do it at the end of the year.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, um, discussion regarding the New Year's Eve event, motion to authorize funds to pay for insurance coverage in a four body unit.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Second. Are you a discussion?
Yes. Are you still gonna drop the pre-creation stuff then?
I'm telling everybody still wants, because of one person, because of what you did, I can't apply that. I went to the right channel, but sort of going here to get it done properly, so we can go through what we did last year.
One is made.
Frankly, it's embarrassing what we're doing there. We've been trying to look back down line with our life, and now we're off the radiation. That's just.
Yeah. I think we've lost people there. Anybody who had to live through.
We can also motion to table, as there are ordinances required, there is a recreation board, um, that isn't established, completely established to, to deordinate.
That's clear as night. Do we have any?
Table. I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
To table.
All those in favor?
I.
To table whether we drop the nuclear thing? They're tables.
They don't wanna fund it basically, because it's a nuclear tunnel, it offends them.
Well, I, I don't think it's matter, it, it.
It offends me too.
I, I don't know why it offends you, you are, it, it's just a nuclear.
Do you hear Jordan, nuclear action?
Because this borough. You can drop the baseball wrong because of Greg Rose, and I'd be behind you a hundred percent.
And a lot of people told me that's dumb.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Well, there was a lot of people there, and they didn't bother them.
Oh, I know, but.
I'm not, I don't, I'm.
We'll just table, we'll, we'll take care of it later. We'll table it for now, I think, go to the table.
I mean, I was scared of that, and I took off and went to New York because my bloke was right. Yes, I was scared, and I can understand the over-silence of the.
Call for, uh, all those in favor?
Of table.
Of table and the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion on council members contacting the solicitor, motion to approve which council members can contact the solicitors.
Heads and solicitors agreement will be hard, two people, it's all a little difficult. And that is the president and president and manager. That was put in the contract.
That would be another thing that would be key for, for reorg, I guess, if I had reaffirm.
A little bit.
Outside of that, the mayor has authority to discuss matters regarding.
Orders, yes.
Yeah, it's been, um. It's been longstanding policy that, uh, the council president and borough manager is the ones who can contact the solicitor, because there are more avenues to get qualified legal advice on certain things than just the solicitor. That is a free to us, free of cost because of the associations that we belong to, one being the cap area.
Capco.
Capco, council of governments, um, I think the other might be the.
A T P.
Borough association, borough association.
Yeah, the AMP.
AMP. So, that's why it's, it's more limited to him and I. As I said, I, I think that's something that's best set for when rework happens and you'll re. Um, as I said, I, I think that's something that's best set for when rework happens, and you all reestablish the solicitor for the next year. Um. Do they have any other comments on it?
Only problem I have with that is I say it's not fair to rest of us, because if the president of council goes one way, and somebody else has an issue, we're all equal here.
We still have to be equal wherever you.
And uh, why was that doctrine that states that? I don't want the one that you just print. There's a longstanding doctrine that says that.
Oh, that's one.
I can add to your concern that there is always a channel for council members or whoever to contact either the manager or the president, who then would deem whether or not it's appropriate, brings my attention. All of this is in order to save the whole costs, because whenever I'm contacted, I'm going to build it for it. So another avenue is that you can bring your questions to me at this meeting because I'm going to be here. That's another way to do it. It's not to box you out, it's to control how much money needs to be.
Right. Well, we, we understand it costs money, but there, there needs to be more than just the president. We need president, vice president.
President.
We need that, so you have president and manager, that's two avenues.
Plus you have this meeting.
By the way, the two are like two guys, I'm not giving anybody else, this is what I'm saying.
I serve, I serve borough council as a whole. If you all want to be able to contact me, and that's what you all agree upon, I will answer. Um, it is not meant to dispute whatever your policy is.
Well, we need to have a discussion about that. I mean, we could table it, but I wanna have a discussion about that for two, another avenue.
Alright, so is there a motion on the table? Alright, um, you said you want a table?
Yeah, I'll put a table, so I wanna have a discussion about that.
You need to make, need a motion to table that?
I'll make a motion with David, but.
Alright, with a second?
A second.
Should we wait for, yep? Yeah. If you have a majority, just move on it. Alright. All those in favor of table?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Um. Alright, uh, discussion of residents complaints and destruction by the property by the borough manager of our district. Of course, we're team. And who will compensate for damages?
This is pretty much what we discussed upstairs, uh, I guess we have to find out where the boundaries are.
Okay, so, um.
So I say we table that, that we find where the boundaries are, the right ways.
Okay. Um. Yeah, you all are starting to really look into it. Um. Motion to remove, uh, Charlie Rush Creek immediately as borough manager and all other duties listed in ordinance E one dash one.
I'm gonna make a motion to remove him.
Your second?
Second, aye.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Nay.
I'm nay.
Aye.
Took.
No.
We get it clear. I don't understand.
Listen.
All those in favor?
Vard mate? If you got a comment to make me vote to the voting.
All those in favor of removing Charlie as borough manager effective immediately, and all other duties listed as E one dash one? Or listed in ordinance E one dash one?
Uh, aye.
Is there any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
The nays carry.
Two, two.
I'm sorry.
Do roll call votes.
Roll call vote.
Do we have to click this guy? That was at all?
Yes.
Alright, okay, thank you. Um, I have a really big concern as everybody at this table of the temperament that everybody comes here with, including Charlie Rush Creek. He displaces temperament every time we do this, anytime he's up there with the residents. So I have a huge concern of what that brings liability wise to everybody in this borough that will cost them money and have to leave. So I have a huge concern with that. I also have a huge concern of removing Charlie immediately, and then having to still some, have somebody else fill that void, which potentially be you Matt, and I know this is not your full-time job, everything to do, so it beats down everybody else in all of your full-time lives, full-time lives. So I have issues with both. I don't know if I'm ready to just move away from Charlie right now. I would love to find a candidate that would be able to fill his seat sooner or later, and I think that's the way to solve this issue. He wants out, I wanna find somebody new.
We've, we've, we've been doing.
I know, I know, I know, I know, I know. So I think the better avenue would be, instead of, I'll send Charlie is putting our, putting the foot on the throttle of finding somebody, like, what are we really doing? I mean, I don't hear really much, any, any conversation outside of here.
I think, I think.
I know where, I know where I'm applying, I know all that, but I think that.
We're gonna, we're gonna migrate to.
But, okay, so, to, to, to someone like that. His, see, his temperament right now, this is why, this is why his, his temperament is, I don't wanna like phrase it anyway, but it's, it's.
Counted.
It's gone. Well, I don't know, uh, correct, uh, correct words there, but it's, it's bad, and it's going to cost the borough money at some point. So, yeah, there's case for removing, it's costly initially, alright, so.
See, he's just staring me down right now.
Both of y'all are also doing it too, please don't.
Yeah, so it's, it's a total, anything for charity. And what do you tell people that's petty and all that kinda stuff? We need to alleviate that stuff. We are adults. We are, they counsel, but we are.
I agree with you, I, I totally agree with you.
And I'm not trying to.
But he's got his connect for.
I, I totally agree with that, and I think we should address that and then affirm the man, but whatever it means to this kind of stuff, it makes it double. So I think there should be something like you said, that maybe we suspend Charlie because of his temperament as he thumbs up in a brutal, I think it should go without pay, because there, there has to be discipline, just like if one of us backed up tremendously, I think as counsel, they should be able to be voted on and removed for a period of, at least a period of time.
Can't.
Okay, un-understood. But Charlie, we can, and Charlie showed bad temperament, and we all have.
Yes.
So I would ask everybody to bring his temperament back down, so we can all be level-headed and make decisions that are best for the entire community, not ourselves.
I agree with you.
Alright, so there's currently a motion on the table that needs dealt with. With the roll call vote. Um, Mike?
I am voting no.
Ron?
Yes.
Jeanne?
No.
Rob?
No.
Hill?
What are we voting on? Do we remove now?
Remove Charlie?
But then will, there'll be a motion to suspend him?
It depends if someone makes the motion.
Okay. Well, we'll back up, we'll make a motion.
No, we have to, we have to, we have to finish the vote. Hill?
Is that with or without bed?
Well, we have. We got a question.
Right now, there's three of us.
Nay.
I'm a nay.
I'm a nay.
Now may I bring up that motion?
Mm-hmm.
I think that it would best be done, uh, by adding an agenda item and also choose that in effect. Uh. Employee employee handbook that I distributed earlier, the draft one contains more defined guidelines for how to deal with extractions from employees.
That's a draft, right?
It is a draft, I want you to consider it for the next meeting, um, if you want to make something else. Charlie is an actual employee serving at the pleasure of a borough council.
May, when we had a special meeting.
You can do executive sessions at any time to discuss personal matters.
Okay. And when do I declare or whatever that would be?
You would just work with council.
Resident's role.
Situation?
So we can't make a motion this.
Not right, not right.
Why didn't you tell us that before we voted, or I would have voted?
But this is what we can do, we can still do it for, once again, about the temperament. I can communicate, I, I can communicate with Matt about getting an executive session that we can all be part of and vote on that. And then most, I need to communicate.
It likely won't happen before the next meeting, because the next meeting is only two weeks.
Fair.
Second.
What are you sparking at me for?
Look at me, that's exactly what you were talking about, look at me.
Sell.
Because about advertisements and apartments and stuff. To be clear, I can absolutely make the money.
Okay, so, okay. So I amend this agenda.
You could.
Okay, so, may I make an amendment to the agenda to vote to suspend Charlie for one week without pay?
Alright, you're second on amending the agenda. I'll second it. Yeah, all those in favor of amending the agenda?
Aye, aye, aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Roll call vote. Mike?
Yay.
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 Nay.
Yay.
Nay.
Nay. Carries four three. Agenda is, alright, the agenda is amended. Now we need a mo, uh, is there a motion to suspend Charlie? Discussion on the motion. Discussion on the mo, on the motion. Anyone have discussion for the motion to suspend Charlie for one week without pay?
I feel like I've stated my necessities.
Does he have to come to work?
No.
No.
No, so who's going to, who's going to do Charlie's job for that?
That would follow the ground.
Alright, hearing no discuss, further discussion. Uh, on the motion to suspend Charlie for one week without pay. Mike?
I second that, you, you're pointing the phone forward?
Or no, you have, you have a second. No. I'm not pointing it forward.
I will make a motion to suspend Charlie for one week without pay. I guess, what, starting Monday? Of next week. Second.
Second? Alright. Roll call vote. Mike?
Yay. Yay.
Ron?
Yay.
Rob?
Nay. Yay.
Nay.
Nay. Four three carries. Who's gonna take the phone call on the power now? You?
I'm.
Um. Will you have a vacuum up there? Um. Alright, next thing is a motion to file complaint disciplinary board of the P S group court due to several actions of the solicitor. I'm happy to answer any questions that you wanna make out. Any discussion? Is there a motion?
No, I'm gonna table that for now, because I have a parcel list together, it's all my third, and I can't actually, I'll table that for next year.
I'll second table, I'm not a problem with solicitor.
Alright, all those in favor of tableing it?
Uh.
Opposing? Um, motion to, for council to investigate the possibility of hiring a new solicitor.
I'll make that note, so. Their rate's going up, so I think we need to look around.
That rate is actually. Here we go, if that letter we sent out, it's consistent with the figure that's currently in place, the reserve is right to increase our fees three percent year over year, so yes, we'll go in fact.
I'll second the motion to.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Um. You can call for a roll call, anybody have a question? Carrying none. Um. Discussion on who has keys to the borough building. Motion for every council member that needs, vote a motion.
I'm gonna make that motion because we all are legal council members, we all can access the office, work with Matt, ordinances, anything we use. We don't have to necessarily be here every part-time hours, every council member should have a set of keys. We are all the employer, we are all the employer.
There's only six of us keys now, and that doesn't include all but one, don't allow. You said there's six keys now.
Six keys, that's it. Who has those keys?
Cleaning people? That's me, Kim, Darnell, and Sam.
Um, I do too.
I do, okay, so.
He doesn't have keys?
I do.
So he has keys.
Well, he's, he's the ma.
Doesn't matter, we all should have a set of keys. I personally don't want one. Something goes missing.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't wanna be, I don't need to, I can get whatever information I need in a timely fashion, that it's not, that's just a good old plan.
I'll turn my.
I don't. I don't.
Motion? Is there a motion? Alright, hearing no motion? Um. Um. Treasure report.
You gotta have it.
For the council.
Have a copy.
Any discussion on the treasure report? If not any motion to accept the treasure report, I'll make a vote. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Make a motion to pay the court. Alright, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Are you moving the family?
I want to thank everybody for hanging out here for nine o'clock.
Yeah.
I appreciate everybody.
Uh, next council meeting should be scheduled for, uh, November tenth, at six three. Um. As actual borough manager during the current extension, the borough office will disclose the public notice.
Sorry, you said that, you what?
Close to the public, this will further notice.
Won't their app, won't the admin be in the office?
Like Darnell and my.
Close to the public, this will further notice.
So who would be, you're not gonna be available, who would be available, the vice president?
No, I'm available, I'm accepting the responsibility of hand as.
Closing it.
Yes.
So you would restrict the use of the office to the presidents of the area?
Yes.
Okay. And should it be a care?
Oh, okay. So that meeting is, uh, a motion to adjourn.
Ross.